Thank you. Welcome again to the Mesa City Council Meeting for December the 8th of 2022. This will be our last city council meeting of this year, so I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. And also, this is the last meeting for a couple of our council members, Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Luna. We had a reception for them a couple of hours ago where we honored them and said a lot of nice things about them, but I don't want to let this opportunity go by without just reiterating how significant the contribution of these gentlemen has been to our community. They've served us for eight and nine and a half years respectively, which is a significant tenure. And during that amount of time, there's been a significant amount of growth in our community. And most of that growth, the vast majority of that growth, has occurred in their districts. So they've had a lot on their hands and they've managed it very well. And I have to say that that our city generally, but districts five and six are great places to live and work and play. And that is due in large part to the efforts of these gentlemen. So I just want to say thank you again, gentlemen, for your service. You will be missed, but your impact will certainly be felt in our community for years to come. Thank you. We will begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Bernard Carl with First Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, bless the public servants in the government of the city of Mesa, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life for the good of all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Christopher, would you please come forward and read the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item two, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Nellows Pizza, 2950 South Alma School Road. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Papa Go by Huss Brewing, 1033 North Dobson Road. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Crawfish Cafe, 28 South Dobson Road. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for El Pacifico, 1911 West Broadway Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Georgia Leadership Foundation, one-day event, January 14th at Riverview Park, 2100 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 4A, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for Brigade Driving and Safety Solution for the Solid Waste Department. Item 4B, approving five-year term master contract with five years of renewal options for recycling, processing, and marketing services for the Solid Waste Department. Item 4C, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for badging supplies for the Police Department. Item 4D, approving use of a cooperative contract for the purchase of grappler immobilization devices and related equipment and training for police vehicles for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4E, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for electric utility distribution transformers for the materials and supply warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4F, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for office supplies and products. Item 4G, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for commercial-grade fitness equipment for the Fire, Medical, Police, and Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Departments. Item 4H, approving use of a cooperative contract for monument signage, lighting replacement for the Transportation Department. Item 4I, approving contract for Mesa City Hall Project Construction Manager at Risk, guaranteed maximum price. Item 4J, approving contract for intelligent transportation systems, voice detection upgrades. Funding for the project includes a congestion mitigation and air quality grant, a local funding match, and funding from the local street sales tax. Item 5A, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a fifth amendment to the Mesa approving grounds pre-annexation and development agreement for property within the Eastmark Development. Item 5B, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum and restated maintenance agreement for Phase IV of the Eastmark Great Park. Item 5C, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix and various partnering agencies within Maricopa County for distribution of funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Police Department. Item 5D, approving resolution extinguishing a portion of a water and sewer line easement located at 4559 South Power Road to accommodate construction of a commercial industrial building for commercial and indoor recreational uses. Item 5E, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Chandler, Town of Gilbert, City of Tempe, and Town of Queen Creek for the sharing of law enforcement information between jurisdictions. Item 5F, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Downtown Mesa Association for city-owned property and improvements located at 100 North Center Street. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance for annexation case 22-1048 to de-annex the public right-of-way located within the 4,200 to 4,400 blocks of South Sostoman Road to Maricopa County. This is subject to approval by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Items 7A and 7B are for continuums to the January 9th, 2023 city council meeting. This is for a zoning ordinance and resolution related to a proposed development on property generally located east of Higley Road on the south side of Thomas Road. Again, this is for continuums to the January 9th, 2023 city council meeting. Item 8A, approving ordinance amending various chapters of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to outdoor eating areas. Item 8B, approving ordinance amending various chapters of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to temporary uses, outdoor displays, site plans, and special events. Item 9A, approving subdivision plat Metro Mesa Phase II for property generally located north of Baseline Road and east of Mesa Drive. And item 9B, approving subdivision plat Hopewell Mesa for property generally located west of Staple Drive on the north side of Baseline Road. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. There's been a motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson, for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 10. This is to take action on the ordinance for zoning case 22-431 to rezone approximately 10 acres located west of Recker Road on the north side of Baseline Road for the proposed Millennium Superstition Springs development for a multiple-residence development. I know we have the applicant present, Mr. Hugh Mantle. I invite you to come forward and tell us what we need to know about your zoning case.
Thank you. For the record, Charles Hugh Mantle, on behalf of the applicant. I'm mindful that I am one of the few things separating you from Christmas, which is an enviable position. And I think the cinnamon roll energy will only go so long, so I'll try to be somewhat brief and move forward while I'm still happy. I know you've had a lot of time to talk about this case, and we've talked about it in different settings and in different pieces. I'm going to go through a presentation. I'm going to focus specifically on the issue that you raised downstairs, Mayor, about parking. I think that we have a very logical answer to it. But I really want to talk about a number of things first. And I think the basis of this case is what not only Mesa, but Mesa has certainly spoken of, but also most of the valley, which is there's a housing crisis. There aren't enough places for people to live. This is particularly true around, believe it or not, colleges and hospitals. And it just so happened that this is a location where there are both colleges and hospitals. And I believe you'll hear from AT Steel later today. And one of the things that's interesting about that, it ties the two together. It's education. It's designed specifically to feed the medical campuses that are in the valley. As we grow and as we age, those two things are really critical, having enough employees so that we can feed the hospitals and so that the hospitals can operate successfully, particularly as we've seen over the last few years with the pandemic. Those jobs are really critical. As we move and grow as a valley, it's harder and harder for people who have those long shifts to drive further and further from where they have to work. And so we see this as a great solution for providing housing to people who are in need of it. We've proposed a building that we think is attractive and works well for Mesa. And we went through the planning process to do that. And frankly, it's not just us, fortunately. We see great comments from the Design Review Board. The vice chair mentioned specifically that it looks really nice, well thought through, good articulation. The chair said, "It's a good-looking project. It's a good fit." Board Member Thompson said, "I think the project looks great." Board Member Trexler said, "It's a testament to tasteful use of materials." So as we move through our request, we're glad that we have support from people like your boards. Notably, we don't have it from your staff. That's obvious. It's been clear even here today. But frankly, that's the only person in the community, or only entity in the community that hasn't been supportive, really, in some way, shape, or form. AT Steel will be here. I'll pass on this slide because I think it's better for them to speak for themselves. But you've seen a lot of multifamily cases in Mesa. And one of the things that you usually find that accompany those cases are a stack of blue cards. And you only have one today, and it's in support. And I think that's because this is exactly the right location for multifamily. It's not next to single-family. It's in an area that has significant capabilities on the streets. You couldn't put enough development on this land to impact what happens on the major streets nearby. And those people will either go directly to the places they work, which are likely AT Steel, or go to school, or the hospital, or get on the freeway. They're not moving through Mesa neighborhoods. In fact, if they go across the street, they're not even in Mesa. And so I think the location of this site is one of the things that, in our mind, makes great sense. It's also why you don't have anyone here in opposition from the public. This is the site. I think you're all familiar with it now. And I'll move through some of the technical matters because we've had so much discussion. And I think really what I hear is that one of the concerns is parking. The parking code looks at things in a way that may have made more sense when the parking code was created. And we talk about how many, what the density of a project is all the time. It's an interesting discussion, but it sometimes loses context. And I'd like to try to provide some of that context and why we think things make sense here. And maybe they wouldn't in another case. The mix of a project is as important as the density. I could have 400 units and I had 400 bedrooms. Or I could have 400 units and I could have 800 bedrooms. Or I could have 400 units. And I could go on and on, depending on how big the units are. What I think is important is how many parking spaces there are per bedroom. As a practical, reasonable person, that's kind of what I look at as maybe a better way to look at this than the zoning code. And it's okay. The zoning code is a guide, and we should look at it. And we should decide, are there things that make more or less sense based on the practical application of the project? In this case, each bedroom has .99, or almost one full, parking space per bedroom. And if we look into the community and look at projects that are in place, we know that that's overparked, frankly, that not everyone will have a car per bedroom, and will have extra spaces. And that's good. We want extra spaces. We're going to spend a lot of money to build this project. And if we build it, we don't want to be short on parking spaces either. We're impacted at least as much as anyone else. But frankly, there isn't really a place for it to spill over. Again, it's not like people are going to park in the neighborhood behind us, because obviously they can't. There isn't one. There aren't single-family homes behind us. What is most likely to happen, if that happens, is you'd find, for example, people at AT Steel who went to school and can also park there, they would park there. We don't believe that we're anywhere close to a parking danger situation. We don't believe we're anywhere close to parked at capacity. We think we're parked over capacity. That's intentional. We think that's great. And we don't see that as an issue. And I think that if you look at other projects in the community, you would find exactly the same thing. So I think our position is that we have designed a good project for a good location. And so now, in some ways, the debate is, well, should it be MR4 or MR5? And respectfully, we disagree with staff. We think it should be MR5. We think that there is a housing shortage, and we should put as many units as we reasonably can into places where we can put them, especially in places where there is no opposition to that, except from your own staff. And our position is that this project does that. It's the right size for the right parcel, and we would ask you to approve it. I know AT Steel wants to speak and certainly like an opportunity to respond after they do. And you may have questions now, particularly, Mayor. I know you've expressed some concerns. So if there are questions now, I'm happy to answer them.
No, thank you, Mr. Hugh Mantle. I might have some later. You mentioned there are some speakers, and so we'll call them up at this time.
Thank you.
First, we have Mr. Joel Sands. Joel, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Duff, members of the city council, Councilman Luna, Councilman Thompson, thank you greatly for your service to the city. Greatly appreciated for the work that you've done. Last week, we were here, and we said AT Steel is conditionally opposing this development. We've had conversations with Mr. Hemantol, and AT Steel does support this case because it believes that housing is consistent with the Educational Campus Specialty District. As we noted last week, that support should not be interpreted that any and all changes to the general plan specialty district designation are acceptable. ATSU does continue to maintain that the council's adoption of the amendment to the general plan at last week's meeting was improper because staff and PNZ did not follow the procedures for amending the general plan. We would also note, in today's memo that was posted online today, the memo from staff continues to oppose the case and cites as a reason, and I'm quoting, "the development integration with the AT Steel and the specialty district." I think they meant the AT Steel campus, so it should have a "SIC" there. But they're concerned with the integration with the AT Steel campus. So we would hope that council would not reject a development that AT Steel supports because it is consistent with AT Steel's mission of education, but possibly, and out of a concern that the development does not integrate with the AT Steel campus, but may approve a development, as we know, that is coming before council that AT Steel does not support because it certainly does not integrate with the AT Steel campus. Integration with the AT Steel campus and the specialty education campus shouldn't change depending on the development. If we're concerned about integration with the AT Steel campus, we would encourage council to consider that and be consistent. And we also think that staff and PNZ should also be consistent in their opposition. It would be ironic if council were to reject a development that AT Steel supports out of a concern for protecting AT Steel's campus and the specialty education district, but then may, at a later date, approve a case that AT Steel opposes because it is not consistent with AT Steel's mission or the specialty district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. We also have a card from Anna Makin. Anna, are you here? Welcome.
Hello, council. Mayor, I feel like this project adds a lot of density because I'm from a neighborhood near Red Mountain where the Longbow increases by several hundreds of apartments, and traffic and everything else is going to be some more difficult. So this apartment project with changes, it should go ahead if you take down the density. It says it has 397-unit multifamily development and is an economically efficient use, but it's too much of a use in a small place. I feel the neighborhood character for Baseline Road and for AT Steel University needs to be redesigned so that it fits in with the character of the place. The quality development guidelines should be looked at again. And under conditions of change, you could probably look at it from a different perspective. There is no other apartment building complex with four floors in that neighborhood, so it would stick out. And I think the developer designed it according to the height of the Abrazo Hospital next to it. So I would feel like, take the height down, leave more space to the roads to Inverness and to the intersection of Inverness and Sunview Road. Give it more space. And don't let anything built without solar power throughout the roofs, because I think that's what Mesa needs, increased solar power. So take a look and see if you can work it into a concept that fits. But this is just too much, four floors and density. And also, the design is not the southwestern or adobe design that you find around here. So if it's going to be workable for students at AT Steel University, give it another thought and see how it can be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Makin. I know we asked staff a couple of questions downstairs, but I'd like to maybe ask staff now to give us a presentation on its position on this zoning case.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. So as we are discussing this case, I'll skip over some of these background slides as far as the location. But as you are aware, the general plan character area for this is specialty with a medical campus subtype. So this is really intended for a single use such as hospitals and medical offices, but it may have supporting uses associated with it. So last Thursday on December 1st, city council approved a text amendment to the general plan. And with that recommendation, with the adoption of Planning and Zoning's additional recommendation to add RM5 zoning, this project is now in compliance with the general plan's character area. So the applicant had originally proposed to do a minor general plan text amendment, but has since then withdrawn that because it is no longer needed. So they are requesting to rezone this to the RM5 with the planned area development overlay to request some deviations from standards. The RM5 zoning district is our highest-density zoning district in the city, as we have discussed last week. And on the screen for you is a map of where those generally are located, or where there are developments with similar densities in the city. The difference with that would be in our downtown area, we have different zoning designations that allow for similar density in the transect zoning with the Form-based Code. And as you can see, they're really intended to be more of urban environments where you are supported by transit, or where they're developed in a comprehensive setting to really have an urban core, such as where we have Hawes Crossing, where it's really meant to have that urban core to it. So their site plan that they're proposing, it is for four-story buildings with 394 units, so that's a density of 40.3 dwelling units per acre. The deviations that they've requested through the planned area development overlay is an increase of the building height from 50 feet to 60 feet. And also, as we discussed earlier, a reduction in their parking. So per code, they're required to park their units at 2.1 spaces per unit, and they are requesting to deviate from that and have a 1.66 space per unit. So that is a 21% reduction, and that equates to about 173 parking spots. In addition, they are requesting to reduce the landscape yard on the west portion of the site from 15 feet to 10 feet. With their parking reduction, they did provide a parking study to justify that. The two discussions in that parking study were transit and comparable developments that were approved with similar reductions. The first one, transit, staff finds that this is not really applicable. In our zoning code, we consider reductions to parking when a development is within a quarter mile of a station area. The nearest transit stop to this property is two miles south, so it really is not in an area where people could walk and use transit to offset that. And then with the quoting of other developments, staff has found that our parking ratio is really sufficient for the needs of the development. We don't see that it is resulting in an over-parking of developments. We do see that it's appropriate. In addition to planning staff, economic development has also provided comments that they are not in support of this development. Their position is that they want to preserve this area for commercial and industrial areas for future job growth, to improve the job-to-housing ratio, and they believe that there are other viable locations in the area. So staff's main issue with this is that the density, we believe, is just not appropriate for the area. We had tried to work with the applicant to reduce their density to an RM4 zoning, and that way we'd be able to address some of the parking concerns as well, if there were fewer units there. In addition to the lack of transit in the area, as Mr. Hugh Mantle mentioned, there's not much place for the offset of parking. So there is no parking on Sunview at all. And there's very limited parking on Inverness, so they aren't allowed to have any overnight parking on those streets. So they really wouldn't be able to offset with the local streets in the area. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rachel. I'm familiar with the criticism regarding parking, so I think we've touched on that. I've also heard that staff had concerns about the traffic impacts, but I didn't see that in your presentation. Is that the case? Are you concerned about how the density of this project would impact local traffic in the area?
On their site plan, they do have two access points. One is off of Baseline, and then they have a second one off of Inverness. So it's really a matter of, there's a median there in Baseline, so a matter of being able to get in and out of that development easily. It's going to require a lot of routing along Sunview and Inverness, kind of indirect and on those internal streets there. So we do have some concerns with the number of units, number of cars that'd be in and out of this site.
But you wouldn't list that as one of the reasons why you're not supporting the project?
I did not list that as a main reason.
Okay, great. Thank you. Council, questions for staff on this project?
We're going to just quickly stage that...
Let's be clear. It's not the city staff that opposed us. There were three members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that also opposed us. I don't want to make it sound like we're isolated out there. I think we did make some compelling arguments that others made. But certainly, council can make whatever decision. I just didn't appreciate the fact that we were being pointed out as the only ones that are in oppose to this. Thank you.
Fair point, Mr. Brady. Yeah, so this is on our agenda, not with a recommendation for approval from either staff or from Planning and Zoning. It was a 3-3 tie with one zoning member being absent. So it was a split vote at the Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you. All right. Council, no additional questions, correct? Thank you. Mr. Hugh Mantle, you said you wanted an opportunity rebut. Go ahead and...
I do. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Some of those questions, some of the comments we just heard, we've heard for the first time. So that's interesting. But I'm glad to hear, and I agree with staff, that the traffic is not a major factor, that the roads in place can handle pretty significant traffic. Again, I want to get back to the point about the bedroom count, because I think that's really important. Looking at it purely from a density standpoint, I think just ignores the facts. And in this case, you only have 17 studios. You have 152 one-bedroom units, 183 two-bedroom units, and 42 three-bedroom units. So in the end, you end up with a parking space per bedroom. And I think that that's really pretty significant. And I think you'd find that that more than exceeds the demand in our communities. I do want to thank AT Steel for coming in, and I know this has been a challenging series of cases for them, and they've been pretty upfront with me about their concerns. I know they opposed the other case. We're not here to talk about that case. I appreciate that they've taken the time from the beginning and again today to support our case. They've always said they do so because it helps for them deliver on the promise that they feel Mesa delivered from them many years ago with the heat initiative. And I think most of you were around there. But one of the business development tools that Mesa used was the priorities of heat. And one of those was education, particularly medical education. And AT Steel came here thinking they would be part of a larger campus. And we have worked with them extensively to find ways to tie into their uses. To that extent, one of the things they have done is to tie their campus to the Y. And the Y and AT Steel have a long history and work closely together. And they've asked us if there were things we could do to help them in that endeavor. And we have agreed to do so. And I was prepared to offer stipulation today. I understand that that's not something I can do. But I'm going to read it into the record for... I understand that that's not something I can do, but I'm gonna read it into the record for the benefit of AT Steel, who, again, we appreciate. And we will work with them in the future to provide a private letter between the parties if the case is approved. And that stipulation is that the developer shall work with staff to provide a permanent, detached, lighted monument sign, up to seven feet in height, located at the northeast corner of Baseline and Sunview Wrecker Road for the YMCA and AT Steel University. This sign shall replace the existing sign. If approved, the sign shall be installed at the cost of developer within six months of approval, excuse me, within, before the certificate of occupancy is issued. It's one of the things they asked us to do to help tie our building, our buildings with their campus. We've agreed to do that, and so I want to be on record so that they know that we will stand true to what we have offered, and we appreciate, again, their support. I'm happy to answer questions, or stop and allow you to get to Christmas faster.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Humantel? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, any counsel discussion on this item?
Mayor Giles, I think you had one more comment for this item.
Let me see. I have, I'm sorry, I have two blue cards.
Two for 10A?
Two for 10A, yes.
I think we only had one.
You had two speakers.
We did?
You did.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Makin also spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, thank you. You had my word. Thank you very much, Mr. Humantel.
Thank you.
Counsel, any discussion on this item? Yes, Ms. Pillsbury.
I was gonna see if any of you wanted to go first, but I will go ahead and give my remarks. First of all, I have to say a huge thank you to the staff for all of their hard work, expertise, professional opinion, meeting with me multiple times, more than I can count, about this case, and helping me understand all of the ins and outs of it. And I really, really respect and admire our staff and appreciate so much of what they do. And I want to also just make a point that when we say a 3-3 for planning zoning, 3 is denial, but 3 also is approval. So I just want to point that out, that this is hard. I think when we have these split planning zoning cases, it means that this isn't an easy case moving forward, so I just wanted to make that point. As a council member, I have to make decisions based on policy sometimes and not just what the staff recommendation is. This is extremely, extremely hard to go in a different direction than staff, but I want to explain why I am in support of this project. I have to say, one of the biggest ones is that there is no neighborhood opposition. And having seven controversial zoning cases this year in my district, that is not the case of any of the other ones. And so that's huge for me, that there are not neighbors right next to them or around them that are in opposition. I also really, when I first got on council two years ago, one of the first things I was told that was needed in my district was more housing for AT Steel and for Banner. And I've been looking to find out how we can fill that need, and I feel like this development fits that need. Banner is in Gilbert, but it's right there. It's within a mile, half a mile from where this project is, and I know they could also use more housing as well. I have six kids that are in, from ages 16 to 24, and they're all in this time period of life where they're gonna need a place to live, and they're gonna be starting their families. And the housing crisis in Mesa is very, very important to me, and I take it seriously, and we're always looking for the best places to put housing. And I, we have about 50 acres to the north of this that will be used for employment in some way or another. And so I don't feel like this is taking up a huge, a huge area for employment. So I also wanted to make sure I put that point in. I looked at this project extensively. I think it's beautiful. I love the four stories because there's elevators, and I think that opens up a huge accessibility to our population, people who would need that. And three-story walk-ups don't have that, and so a lot of people can't get up two flights of stairs or three flights of stairs. And so I loved that accessibility. I loved the amenities. We talked at length about all of the parking and the streets around there and setbacks and all the things that we would normally research on projects, and I felt comfortable with all of the things that we discussed. And I, so I do not have concerns about, about some of those issues that have been brought up. I think I got all my points, but I, those are my reasons why I will be in support of this project.
Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury. I have met with AT Steel, I think, three different administrators, and I asked their opinions on this case, and each one of them told me that they were indifferent to it. So I'm not sure exactly where AT Steel is at on this case. But I wanted, for the record, to say that we certainly support AT Steel and the expansion of AT Steel, and we'll do everything we can to assist with that. But I, like I say, I've had three direct conversations and was told that they don't really, that they're rather indifferent to this. I think this is a beautiful, good-looking project, and I would like to support it. It is a very close call, but I wish you would just have, build some more parking spaces. I don't know why a project that's so well-designed and so much effort has gone into making it a quality project, and it is. The projects you've done in Mesa are all high-quality projects, so I would love to see this developer continue to come to Mesa, but that's why I'm a little baffled, why we just, why we don't have enough parking here. So it's a close call for me, but I would love to see this project. I think you could have the parking reductions if it were somewhere closer to the light rail or somewhere in a more urban environment. I would love to see a four-story apartment complex in a different part of town. It will, it doesn't quite fit the character of this neighborhood, in my opinion. So it's a close call for me, but I will not be supporting the case. Any other discussion, counsel? All right, let's see, do we have a, we have a motion? This is a motion for approval, correct? A motion for approval made by Councilmember Freeman? Is there a second?
The motion is for denial, is the way it's written.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, thank you for correcting that.
Mayor, it can be a motion however you want to make it, right? It's not on the consent agenda, so if someone wants to make a motion for approval or a motion for denial, they can. Why don't they, whoever, Councilmember Freeman, if you want to clarify, if you want it for approval or denial.
Were you gonna ask for any other comments? Because I was also gonna make a motion, but I was waiting to see if there were any comments. But I guess we'll just vote the opposite way, then.
All right. Yeah, we might vote two or three times here to see how it all shakes out. So it'll be interesting. Thank you. We absolutely will, depending on the outcome of this, this motion, will entertain additional motions. So there's a motion made for denial. Is there a second? All right. That motion fails for lack of a second. Ms. Pillsbury.
I will make a motion to approve 10A.
Thank you. A motion has been made for approval, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any additional discussion? All right, please cast your vote. All right, that motion passes with, that's a 6-1 vote, so congratulations, Mr. Humantel, your case passes.
Thank you. We appreciate it also. I want to use just one moment of my time to thank Councilmembers Thompson and Luna for all their time in Mesa. It will be sad to see you go, but really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Normally, our rule is we only allow for three of these. I've been handed five cards, but I'm in the holiday spirit, so I think we're gonna try to make it through five cards today. But I just want the speakers to know that we will be strictly adhering to the three-minute limit for speakers. First is Deanna Villanueva Saucedo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Deanna Villanueva Saucedo, 1513 South Case Circle. Councilmember Thompson, congratulations on your service and best wishes on your next endeavor. Councilmember Luna, you know that we could not let this meeting pass without notice. On behalf of a grateful community, Mesa in general, our Latino community specifically, we have to thank you for your service and your decade of service on council. You've served all of Mesa with dignity and respect, but for our Latino community especially, you must know how significant you have been and your role has been. The first Latino to ever be elected to service in over 130 years of being incorporated as a city is significant. You have been a champion for inclusivity, for progress, for education, for so many important issues. The Nondiscrimination Ordinance, Hispanic Leadership Institute East Valley, Latino Town Hall, Dia de los Muertos, Gallos de las Chavas, the list goes on and on, and that is a powerful legacy indeed. Councilmember Adia is the second Latino ever elected. No pressure. We look forward to working with you as you continue your service on council. But David, please know, on behalf of a very grateful community, a very grateful Latino community, our hearts go with you as you move into a next area of service. We know that your term may be ending, but you will always remain an active member. So de parte de nuestra comunidad, gracias.
Dan, I can't, I can't not say thank you for your service in our community as well.
Welcome, Mr. Armelo. You have three minutes. Welcome, Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Armelo. I'm a taxpayer in Mesa, and I understand that the city of Mesa, in lieu of property tax, is taxing us at about 92 cents per $1 of every NAV. That puts the tax at about 39 million. If the city charged a primary property tax of 1%, that would net us around 40 million. Also, the city of Mesa collects from the utility fund instead of a primary property tax. This year's budget shows about 120 million from this fund. It looks like the utility fund transfer of 120 million is overcharging ratepayers by about 80 million. We currently are dealing with high inflation. I have to cut my budget to make it work. I hope you don't balance your personal budgets the way you handle the city's budget. It's time the council makes hard decisions to tighten your belt and stop spending money we don't have on things that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armelo. Thank you, Cheryl Armelo.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Giles. My name is Sherry Armelo. I live at 10246 East Tiburon in Encore at Eastmark. My concern is Mesa is operating a budget in a deficit at a time when costs are skyrocketing and not likely to go down. I've learned that you are overcharging residents for utilities by approximately 80 million, more than a 1% property tax would be, yet you're still in a deficit. On top of this, one of my big concerns is that I've learned you are in the process of purchasing a hotel for the homeless. Really? You operate in a deficit, you charge residents 80 million more than we should probably be charged, and you are purchasing property for people that will not add anything to our economy. You are committing my future, or excuse me, committing to future maintenance, insurance costs, possible lawsuits for this property with my future tax dollars. I moved here from the northwest. I've seen Seattle, Tacoma, Puyallup, Portland, and Eugene all grow slums by these kinds of decisions. My nephew owns a business in Puyallup, Washington, and his entire office had to recently move because of trash, feces, and bodies around his building. When living in Eugene, the neighboring town of Springfield found an almost overnight solution to homelessness. They simply designed a fee, a fine, excuse me, that would be given in the amount of a significant traffic ticket to anyone found giving handouts to homeless. Well, the beggars simply moved on to more hospitable territory, which happened to be Eugene where I lived. So my message is very simple. Don't charge residents who keep this town running and livable by taking money not needed from us. Your costs of living will go down, you will have less homelessness. And two, don't destroy my newfound home that I love with homeless programs that attract more homeless, drugs, and crime by spending money we simply don't have.
Thank you, Ms. Armelo. Next is Mr. Kerry Davis. Welcome, Mr. Davis. Good to have you back. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kerry Davis, and I'm concerned about Mesa's financial condition. I believe, number one, the city is overstaffed. According to the city's current year budget, expenditures for personnel are approximately 67% higher than 10 years ago. The current year budget reflects an increase in personnel expenditures of 59.7 million, an 11.7% increase over the prior year budget. By comparison, the city of Tucson reduced employees by 7% from 2012 through 2021. Number two, I believe the city is top-heavy with management personnel. The organization chart for Mesa lists one city manager and five deputy city managers. By comparison, the city of Tucson lists one city manager and three deputy city managers. Number three, I believe the city's debt is high. As of June 30th, 2021, the city's total outstanding bond and obligation debt was $1.7 billion. To put this number in perspective, an Arizona Department of Revenue report compares Gilbert, Glendale, Chandler, Scottsdale, Tempe, and Mesa and Phoenix total bond and obligation debt per capita and shows Mesa is the second highest among these seven cities. Fiscal year 2021 total liabilities were $2.58 billion, or 91.2% of total assets. Number four, I believe the city is overspending and not keeping faith with keeping taxes and fees low. In 1946, the city of Mesa adopted the policy of not charging a primary property tax. It seems to me that the intent would most likely have been to keep taxes low for residents. If the city charged a primary property tax of 1%, similar to the secondary property tax rate, it would collect approximately $40 million. As stated in the current budget, another resource for general fund, governmental funds is the contribution from the utility fund. Mesa uses the contribution in lieu of a primary property tax. The current year budget reflects a transfer from the utility fund of $120 million. If, as stated, the utility fund surplus is intended to subsidize the general fund in lieu of primary property tax, then the city should only transfer approximately 40 million, not 120 million. In other words, I estimate the city is overcharging utility ratepayers approximately $80 million. Finally, the current year's budget for general governmental projects revenues of $452 million and expenditures of $591 million for a deficit of $139 million in expenditures over revenues. The budget reflects a transfer of $120 million from the utility fund to offset this deficit. So as I stated earlier, I believe the city is overstaffed, top-heavy, has too much debt, and overspends general fund revenues. I respectfully request the city council adopt a more fiscally conservative budget during the next budgetary cycle. Thank you for your time and attention. Also like to thank you, Mayor Giles, for the opportunity to meet with you and the CFO, and thank Kevin Thompson and Councilman Luna for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. We have one more speaker. Thank you. We have one more speaker, Mr. Neil Carter. Welcome, Representative Carter. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, distinguished councilpeople and guests. My name is Neil Carter. I reside at 2197 West Goldist Avenue in Pinal County. Although I reside in Pinal County, I am a customer of Mesa Gas. But it was not my intent to use up one of the public's comments, so thank you for allowing me to just introduce myself. I'm one of the two state representatives for District 15. Because of redistricting, our district now goes into Mesa to the corners of Power and Baseline, which includes, of course, the airport, all of Eastmark, as well as the ASU Power Knowledge Corridor and some other areas in Mesa. So I just wanted to read into the record my name and my telephone number, 480-628-1037. So I'm available to anybody of the citizenry or yourselves that may need anything at the state level. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. This is a first. We haven't had a legislator come and do this yet, so our compliments. And again, congratulations on your election.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson, for the last time. We appreciate that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.